...of the Hubbardston Planning Board. And Hubbardston Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Zoom pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, which allows public meetings to be conducted remotely so that board and committee members as well as members of the public can participate remotely. So if you are here and present in this room, you are being recorded and broadcast live, so please keep that in mind with any other comments that you're making. So Kathy, please call in.
Yep, I'm Kathy Hansgate, Chairman of the Board of Health, and I'm calling the Board of Health meeting to order at 7:05 PM in conjunction with Planning Board.
Thank you. So just talking a little bit procedurally here, we have published an agenda for this meeting, and we're essentially going to run down that agenda. Now, there's been, there's been some changes in terms of board's ability to regulate public comment, so because of those changes, I'm just going to ask politely that everybody please be polite and civil, although I apparently can't directly enforce that anymore. And we're also going to limit public comment to three minutes per person, and we're going to use that as a pretty hard fast rule. If you have questions, please state your question, direct your question to the chair, say the chair being myself or Kathy, and say who it is that you would like to answer that question, and then we'll, we'll have the applicant, excuse me, the permit holders, if the question is appropriate to them, answer that question during their time. So for this first part where we're asking for public comment, it's essentially going to be a listening session for us. Does, are there any questions from anybody on the board? Does that process sound good to everybody?
Sounds good.
Excellent. So with that said, we're here to, to hold a joint public meeting to discuss order complaints received during the 2022 harvest season for the two marijuana grow operations in Hubbardston. We're inviting comments from the public and from representatives of the growing operations, and just to talk a little bit about what's going on procedurally here. So in case any, anybody is unaware, in 2012, Massachusetts voters approved the legal use of medical marijuana. In 2016, Massachusetts voters approved the legal cultivation, processing, distribution, and sale of marijuana for adult use. In Hubbardston, we, we approved, excuse me, that vote in particular in Hubbardston went 1539 yes and 1192 no. In 2017, Governor Baker signed the General Courts Revised Law on the subject, an act to ensure safe access to marijuana, adopted as Chapter 55 of the Acts, codified in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 94G. The Department of Health then in 2017 put forward some regulations that are at 105 CMR 725 regulating the use and sale of marijuana. Subsequently, the Cannabis Control Commission was established in 2318, specifically in Hubbardston in 2018 at the special town meeting zoning Article 22 Commercial Marijuana Establishments was passed with a yes vote, that was 142 to nine. We have two permit holders that are here. The site plan and special permit approval for paper crane provisions was filed with the town clerk on 5/20/2021. The site plan and special permit approval for Royal Sun Farms LLC was filed with the town clerk on 06/8/2021, and there was a modified special permit approval for paper crane that was filed with the town clerk on 07/11/2022. And in, in those special permits, there's all kinds of conversations about whatever for jurisdiction, but from a special permit standpoint, we did write into the special permit that if there were three credible order complaints that we would hold a public meeting to talk about the order complaints and give the applicants to express what they believe they may be able to do for mitigation measures and just respond to the public feedback. And that is exactly the meeting that, that we had from a planning board perspective. The Board of Health has some additional jurisdiction. I'm not specifically getting any comments on any of that, but we did have a conversation between the Board of Health and the Planning Board involved with the town administrator where we said, hey, why don't we just have one big old public input session where, where we hear the complaints, we hear any support statements, and we let the applicants respond on what they think they can do for reasonable mitigation measures, and, and then move on from there. So that catches us all up to where we are now. Questions from the board or the TA?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask that you raise your voice when you speak? There's been a couple of people mentioning that they are not able to hear. That's for anybody that's going to be speaking this evening, please just raise your voice for the people at home and the people in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Noted. So with that said, let's start off with the general discussion. So in this discussion, we're soliciting general comments from the public about their experience with the cannabis grow operations last year. We are, we are asking for a time limit of three minutes, and what we have in front of me right now is a three-minute timer, old-fashioned. We have a very limited budget as a town, so that's what we're working with.
Has it been certified?
It is certified, it is certified to plus or minus 10%. So if some, if somebody is 10% over, I'm not going to get too upset here. But, but as I said, although we can't compel you by law to be civil and professional with your comments, I can thoroughly encourage everybody because as a board, that's kind of been our culture. We want everybody to have the opportunity to be heard, and people who cause a ruckus ultimately are causing other people to not have their voices heard. So please be respectful of each other. So with that said, we didn't, we didn't do a paper list on who wants to speak, but I guess show a hands on community members. How many are we looking at that, that would like to express or get a statement?
I would.
Okay, so we got at least one, two.
Three?
Three, four.
I see four hands.
I'm questionable.
Well, we know that about you.
Okay, so we're not talking about 20. That, that's ultimately what, what I'm trying to figure out here. If you need more time, ask for it because if we don't have a huge line, we'll probably be able to give folks some additional time.
Can you ask if any of the remote participants are going to want to?
Would any of the remote participants like to, to make a statement or offer any testimony to us? If you would, just raise your hand in Zoom. Well, we'll keep an eye on it either way, and if, if you change your mind, please do so. Same thing in the room, perhaps you hear something that strikes a chord in your heart and you want to speak your personal truth, please feel free to, to go. With that said, the room ended up a little bit fuller than I expected. So if you're going to comment, I would ask that you come down. That if you're not in this general area, that you come down at least in front of the board. So I don't want to make a hot seat. So with that said, volunteer for going first. Do we have a volunteer to go first?
I think I'll first.
Yeah, well, come.
When you guys signed your agreement to, when the Mr. Schmick and Booney, maybe, signed the agreement for the marijuana grow, I believe there was a clause in there that it had to be low voter plants.
Names and address, please.
Oh, Danielle Ericallian, 36 High Street in Hubbardston. So what kind of crops are you growing? Because they're definitely skunk crops, and there's no cannabis group that claims that those are low voter. None.
So I, we're going to have the applicants answer during their time.
Okay. So that was one of them. If that was, if that was the permit, it was given to them under the purview that they would be growing low-order crops, and they're not, that's an issue. And I don't think any, in any of the lead-up meetings, we were told it was going to be eight to 10 weeks of not being able to open your window in the summer because at 7:30 those plants bloom or something, and the whole street reeks of it. Your stuff does something at nighttime. I'm not sure what it does, but it does something at nighttime. You know, so that's pretty basically it. We're not, I'm not trying to put you out of business, but just be able to open the window would be nice, you know? Especially when it starts somewhere in, what, May? And if you get rid of that crop, that first crop planting, and then the second planting comes in for August, that's rough when you're living down the street from it. And I'm a quarter mile away from it. I can't even imagine the ones closer.
Any, anything else?
No, that was it.
You know, we didn't think about how.
No, you did not think that.
You know, the tigers.
I mean, yeah, there's.
Flip it back over. It would take too long.
I mean, I, I appreciate the sentiment and making things a little more fun.
All right, I got a, I got a stopwatch.
Okay, I'm ready.
All right, so next comment from the public, please. Yep, state.
Jeremiah Woodward at 40 High Street, Danielle's neighbor.
Yep.
How you doing, Danielle?
Hey, good.
Good. So in the summertime, it does not reek for eight to nine weeks, it's two to three weeks at max, and most of the time it's east wind, it goes over the back hill. Unless you have a weird rainy day or storm, it has a west wind coming, that's the only time you really smell it. Unless you're driving right by the place, it's no different than driving by a skunk on the side of the road. It's gone within 80 feet of passing it. So it's really not a crazy odor or less, so. I mean, everyone grows pot in their backyards nowadays anyway, so.
Allegedly.
Allegedly.
Right, right.
Probably does, too.
Any, any additional comment?
So that, that's all I have to say, really.
I'll, I'll make a comment.
Let's just reset the timer.
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay, ready?
All right, as a member of the Conservation Commission, I do a lot of inspections. I do probably 90% of the inspections for the, for the town for conservation. I've come across 11 other areas where people were growing marijuana in their backyards during, so that might contribute. One of them, there were 12 plants very close to one of the growers. That could also help the, the odyssey situation. When I drive by most, both of these places, I'm making my business to see if there's a strong odor coming from them, because I did inspect these, these areas. I don't get a real strong odor. That's all that there's been.
Just reset the timer.
Yep.
And call the next, sir.
Edward Zakowski, 146 Ragged Hill Road. I've lived in this town for 28 years. I've watched the farms being built up here. I drive by all the time just to see how it's just going to smell because I wanted to know how many, what is it going to smell like with that many plants? Not many times I could, but for 28 years, every time I drive by the red field when the wind blows, I smell an awful chicken smell, and it's way worse than any pot smell that I've ever smelled. Never been a problem.
Any additional comment?
That's all I have.
Next. Yep.
Jay Nixon, 46 Hill Road. I was under the impression this is the right to farm community. I have animals, and animals smell bad. When you have a bad smell, it's what you consider bad. Some people don't mind the smell of manure, and some people don't mind the smell of marijuana. The question being, how bad is the smell of the marijuana? I've driven by that place numerous times, and I have yet to smell it. And I have a big nose, I smell good. I have, I have yet to smell that place. And, you know, when, when they were building the place, you used all local contractors. It's a quality business, and I don't really see where you draw the line of the right-to-farm, being that he is basically a farmer. So where does that fall when somebody's sheep smell bad? Do they have to get rid of their sheep and be fined $1,000 a day? I mean, I'm not getting rid of, rid of my pigs, they feed my family, you know? I'm just saying that I, I was under the impression you have the right to do this in this town, so I don't really see where the problem is. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Once we get through everybody. Next.
I wanted to speak, but it's not regarding odors about the special permit, and I'd like to hold.
Ed, you didn't say your name, but.
Pedro Lantur, 23 East Combe Park Road. My question is more to the special permit but not to odor. Can I add that?
Yeah, you, you got your three minutes.
May I add that now or later?
You got your three minutes for whatever you want to talk about.
Okay. I believe in the special permit, there's a thing that provides revenue to the town, a certain percentage of their gross sales. I'd like to ask the applicants how much they owe at this time to the town and how much they have paid so far to the town for the right to grow marijuana in our town because the town needs funds really bad, and this, this is part of the income that we should receive from them, doesn't, doesn't pertain to odor. If we could get answers to that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Further public comment? First time, yep?
Mike Stolf, I've Lombard Road. I heard a comment about making a comparison to a dead skunk. I think the issue for me, although I don't live anywhere near the grow operations, is the intensity of the odor. You know, one dead skunk is just one dead skunk. A large farm, a large marijuana grow, obviously the intensity, concentration, and longevity is an issue that if you're going to make comparisons, make them so that they are more meaningful, I guess, is, you know, what my comment is. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other folks for first time public comment?
We, over here.
Okay.
I'm Laurie Sahigan, I live at 5 Ragged Hill Road, and I do smell the pot, the pot farm, but I also smell the pigs, and I also smell the cow manure, and I kind of look at it as kind of back to your point of right to farm. I mean, it is intense, and when the wind's blowing the right way, it is pretty, can be severe, but it's, I'm not sure if I, one way or the other, I kind of think, like I said, we have pigs near us as well, and I just feel we've chosen to live here, and that's some of the smells that you are going to smell in the farm community.
Thank you. Please be sure to hit the sign and sheet at some point if you have it. All right, and we had somebody over, yep?
Albert Afonso, 33 High Street. I also live within that one-quarter mile radius of the facility. Before I add, just make a comment, I'd like to ask either the town administrator or the chairman of the planning board to describe to the members of this meeting what constitutes a right-to-farm community. As was explained to me, if somebody had a farm, an existing farm in operation, any subsequent landowners coming into that area could have complained because they knew going into it that there was a farm there with animals, so it would fall under the right-to-farm clause. I've lived on High Street before the facility came into existence, but I would like to get a clearer definition, please, if I could, of what a right-to-farm community is. I also, as Mrs. Ericallian, have the aroma or the smell or the pollen that comes from the facility overwhelming from early summer right through mid to end of August. So much so, as she noted, you can't open your windows to let any fresh air into the house without having your whole house inundated by the smell of skunk urine. I've been driving on Route 68 heading north into Gardner with other people in vans and in cars, and they say, what's that smell? And we look around, initially, we looked around for a skunk, never found one, till we finally figured out, oh, it's the facility, it's the plants themselves giving off this aroma. The aroma is strong. For some people, it's very strong. For others, they may not smell it at all. It's, maybe it's like the pig farm, maybe it's like a cow farm, maybe it's like another animal facility where some people find it kind of peeling, other people, really doesn't affect them. But for the people on High Street who are affected, it is significantly affecting, you know, the air quality that they have to breathe.
Right.
Thank you. We're holding the questions until later on, so look for responsibility, please. Additional first-time comments? Where, oh, yes, please.
Tom Bracco, 28 High Street. If you chat last hour about the marijuana bylaw, growing marijuana is not considered an agricultural activity, it doesn't, doesn't exempt it from the smell issues like regular farming was. We do have the right to farm marijuana in town, and if you have a farm, there's nothing anything anyone can do about it. But marijuana is not part of that, if you look at that general law, and they put that provision in there, so just to be clear how it works.
But hemp is.
Hemp is, yes.
And hemp smells exactly the same.
Please reserve for your time, just.
Hemp may, it does, but we're not talking about that.
Well, we'll reserve that for your time. All right, anything else for your time? Any additional first-time comment? Yep?
Patrick Ride, 32 Ragged Hill Road, my property, actually, it's one of the operations, and when this was first proposed, we went through the hearings, every, a lot of people in town, it was well-attended. What do people, what did people think it was going to smell like, honestly? It's only for maybe two, three weeks in the fall, the first time I smelt it. It's not overwhelming, in my opinion, but what gets me is what, what do people expect? I work in multiple people's yards, I can tell immediately if they're growing marijuana as soon as I get out of my truck. So what, in an operation like that, of course, you're going to have a smell. You, you can't really control it, it's more the nature. That's my opinion.
Further first-time comment? Is Kevin? Both are waiting, please.
Yeah, um, Kellyanne Icavoni, 26 Gardner Road. I am also within the, the area in which it smells, it doesn't bother me, it's the same thing, I have country hen, sort of as the crow flies across the street from me, and it's the same thing. My comment is, I have actually the minutes from the community outreach hearing or meeting that they did at first, and all of these things were addressed, and over and over again, all they said was, there's nothing we can do about the smell. So it's, it's not like this is a big surprise and this isn't new information. They have said over and over again that there is not anything we can do about the smell. They indicated that it would just be in the, right before it's ready to be picked is when it would smell, so, I mean, it, I'm just making a comment that this shouldn't come as a surprise to anyone.
Are you further first-time comment? Whitney, I keep seeing you almost.
I'm just, I, I know that there are two people who want to say something.
I, I'll go, I'll go. Okay, so, start the clock.
What's your name?
Katie.
You started the clock a minute ago.
Yes, I know, Katie, 86 Ragged Hill Road. At this point, if you don't know where I live, you haven't been in town. So my daughter actually mows the lawn across the street at the bus company, and because she's underage and can't drive, I am the one that gets to transport her in her lawnmower and sit there while she mows the lawn. So I spent a lot of summer right there across the street from the pot place. Could I smell pot? Yes, I could. Did, also because I'm a selectman and very well-known in town, did I get spoken to by people like Danielle and others that lived on High Street? Yes, yes, I did. I heard a few earfuls from people, but I also sat through all the previous meetings beforehand that it was addressed and pot does smell. So me being me, I'm a direct kind of person, I went to go speak to Bowie directly, and I'm like, we, is there something that can be done? Why did it, you know, have such a smell on certain, you know, times because it, in certain, like, I think it was hot and sticky, which kind of made it linger a little bit more myself personally, but that's my two cents. It doesn't bother me as much, but my husband is much more, doesn't like smells, so it's just like the same thing with people saying, some people it bothers way more than it does like somebody like me. So talking with Bowie, he came up, and I'm hoping he goes over the same plan that he went with me. He described that the stuff that he was told by the growers, and I'm paraphrasing a lot of this, and I hope he can say it in better details, was kind of like a trial basis, and he had a, he kind of overplanted, and also it went longer than it should have before he could harvest, which he thinks made the smell a lot worse than it should have been. And my whole thing is, if he can fix some of these problems by better planting and more strategic planting with timeframes and everything like this, I hate to see businesses in this town getting crapped on like they always are, and I would like to see everyone give him a second chance, and let's see how next year goes, and hopefully he can remedy some of these problems with smell and make it so it's tolerable to open windows on High Street and not have such a lingering odor to some during certain weeks. Was that three minutes?
We've got 20 seconds left.
Okay, so that's my two cents, and yeah, that's all I got.
Boom.
Further first comments? Maybe I'll read these, or might as well do that. Uh, well, you'll get, you're going to have your time, so. All right, so I'll read it, I want. Yeah, I want to get through.
I just had one point, I, a lot of people said, you know, we're a right-to-farm community, and if it was a pig farm, we'd have to deal with the pig farm smell, but it was a pig farm, and they weren't cleaning up their, their waste and, and letting it stink, we can call the Agricultural Commission, and that farmer will have to clean it up. Same thing applies to the chicken farm, things, the farmers are held to some kind of standard. We can call the Agricultural Commission if Tom Bracco drives down the trailer and leaves a cow poop down the whole road and have it go back to Tom's farm. So it's not like they're held to a special class where they're not held, they're not responsible for not inundating their neighborhoods with bad smells. I mean, the town has a way to address it. The town should have a way to address this, too, and I don't think anyone's here trying to shut them down, just trying to get it so that we can open a window without worrying about our clothes smelling like skunk for a day, and it does.
Any, anybody else looking for our last at bat, bat? Oh, I guess, Whitney, you are going for a first comment?
So Whitney Freiber, 70 High Street, I'm also the Chair of Economic Development. I've been at High Street, High Street for a number of years. Well before the farm was there, I smelled pot up and down my street all the time, just a given. I don't smell it very much anymore at all, but to speak to what Kelly was saying, and also Katie, now, we've been through this already, we've had these meetings, we've had these discussions. From an EDC perspective, I have to ask, what, you know, what's the end game? Because there has to be a solution, or our committee will never be able to get a, a business to come to town and, and, and invest the money that's been invested, or even a portion of what they've invested, if our reputation is going to be that they're given permits and then they're dragged in to these meetings, whether it's one meeting or two meetings or five. So I think that we really have to find a solution this evening so that this doesn't continue, because this just doesn't, in my opinion, it, it isn't good at all. Especially, especially for businesses, well, for them, but especially for incoming businesses. We can't have a reputation. I mean, Katie said that the businesses get dumped on.
No, I said they got crapped on.
Crapped on, sorry. But, you know, honestly, we, we, we can't put our businesses subject to that, we can't have that.
We also have the residents being able to live their lives. You know, you can't say, let's throw an asphalt plant in the middle of a town because we need business if it's going to destroy the neighborhood that they throw it in. And I don't think you're destroying the neighborhood, you just don't want it to stink.
I'll come back for additional comments at the end, and I'll also please address your comments to one of the chairs.
Oh, she was looking for this.
So I believe we have one more follow-up call.
I don't understand why it's even a discussion about second chance. They've come to the boards, they've done everything that the town has wanted, they've jumped through hoops with the Cannabis Control Commission, they have commenced operations, we're talking millions and millions of dollars.
Millions.
That are put in, not somebody that right to farm went to track the supply, bought a bunch of chickens. Okay, sorry, didn't work, you have to get rid of your chickens, okay? We're talking millions of dollars through the whole operation, okay? Through the town and the Cannabis Control Commission, which is like running for president, okay? They're not the easiest. Okay, they're not the easiest people to deal with, but they've been compliant with everybody that comes through, okay? They have a community agreement that they're gonna be paying back to this town, okay? So, I tell you what, I'd rather drive by the pot farm, and if it bothers you, hold my nose for thirty seconds until you pass it, okay? Then hit every damn pothole, and blow my tires off my car, and everything else. Because how is this town gonna have any money to do anything if all we do is, oh, well, that bothers me, or that bothers me? They haven't done anything wrong. They've been in agreeance with everybody. Does it smell? Of course. Are you gonna make everybody happy? Absolutely not, impossible.
Alright, thank you for your comment. So, just, we'll take one more, and then I want to move into site-specific discussion, so... Recognizing the town administrator.
Nathan Boudreau, town administrator, Town of Hubbardston. I do want to point out, just for the good of the order, that the town has received no financial gain in community impact fee as of today. I have been working with the owners of the two businesses to try to remedy that. It is also a situation on the statewide level, where the state legislature changed a couple of the rules last November. They now have one whole year from then to come up with guidelines. We are anticipating that in this upcoming November. But until then, we have submitted our own wants and needs and kind of wishes to the CCC. I'm sure so have the owners and their lobbyists. But I did want to say, for the good of the order, from a town standpoint, the town has made zero dollars and zero cents in community impact fees as of right now.
But has the business, have the businesses made any money as of yet either? From the time the Cannabis Commission give them commenced operations, which doesn't mean you can grow your weed, or sell your weed, means you can grow it. They've given you permission to do everything. Now you have a product that, again, is millions of dollars invested in it. You have to wait for permission from them, and you can sell it.
Sir, pardon the order. Please address your questions through the board, not to other folks that are commenting.
Sorry.
Although, he is the TA, so you can beat him up a little bit.
So, no, I'm not trying to beat nobody up on this.
We're working towards it.
Until the businesses take money in, they can't pay out until. Things have to get rolling, okay? They're trying to put training wheels on, and they're wobbly on their bike. We can't take the wheels off and push them down the hill and say, give me money.
And Mr. Bertold is working with the town on getting to a point where we will see eye to eye on that. I can't say the same about both cannabis operations, but Mr. Bertold is working with the town on seeing that through. That is all, thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Alright, thank you. So, I'd like to shift the discussion here into a site-specific discussion, starting with sixty-nine Gardner Road. I, sorry, I get the addresses confused. So there'll be Royal Sun first, and I'm gonna start that by allowing the applicant time specific to sufficient to address the concerns that are raised. But let us know if you're gonna go much longer than like ten minutes on your first statements.
Alright, cool. Hi, everyone.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
Damon Schmidt, sixty-nine Gardner Road. So first thing I want to think is, address Tom's comment, that there was a, I think it was a land court in Massachusetts that said agriculture, cannabis is agriculture, growing cannabis marijuana. So, what he said I don't think is entirely true. So then I'm gonna read seven letters into the record, and then I'll give you a copy of them. That's okay? So number one, to whom it may concern, I, Nina Ballard, and my family are not bothered by the odor of the new weed development on Route sixty-eight. My address is three Ragged Hill Road, Nina Ballard.
I, Greg Maynard, at twenty-nine High Street, have not been affected by any nuisance odors from the growing operations on Gardner Road. In the twenty-five years we have owned this property, I have not noticed any odors.
I, Brendan Barube, live at sixty Gardner Road, Hubbardston. The property that abuts, that abuts me does not bother me. I've been here for two years now, and there hasn't been any problems.
To whom it may concern, I, Dementia Gudaris, business owner on Gardner Road, wish to say that I'm not bothered by the odor of the marijuana farms located at fifty-three Gardner Road. Forgot about me.
Another one, May third, Mr. and Mrs. Paul Wormy. Declare that odor from the marijuana does not bother us to any degree. Yes, we can smell it, but it does not bother us. Paul Wormy, forty-nine Gardner Road. And then Brenda Wormy, forty-nine Gardner Road.
I, Gina Root, of six Ragged Hill Road, have no complaints with the pot farms off of Route sixty-eight. I cannot smell any odors, Gina Root. And then I got the last one on my phone, latecomer here.
Are you gonna be able to submit that one to us in writing?
I can email it to you.
Okay, make sure you submit it to market.
Alright, to whom it may concern, I am owner, resident, living at ten Ragged Hill Road in Hubbardston. Have no complaints with the smell or operation of the marijuana farms that are near touching my property, Linda Brebano. Alright, so those are my seven. I guess back to the odor. I mean, I have thought about it, and I'm just gonna kind of compare it to last year and kind of tell you what we're gonna do different. And I think that's actually gonna help with any odor. So, I think, you know, last year, comparing last year to what we're doing this year is we got a late start because the CCC didn't approve our greenhouse, even though the town approved it, the CCC had to walk through it and approve it with all the security cameras. So we had a delay, so what we did is planted our entire field at once, because we were behind. And then it kind of came due at once. And then we were kind of really late picking it up. So, I think the fact that last year we had our entire field flowering at once maybe contributed to it, so, and there's really not much we can do. I mean, we're eight hundred feet back in the woods, and I've been, as I've been told today. You know, the wind is coming, I guess, from our property blowing towards the street sometimes. So what we're gonna do different this year, which might help, is we're gonna plant a third of the field super quick. And then about a couple of weeks later, we're gonna plant another, maybe half of the field. And maybe a week later, we'll do the other part. And what's gonna happen is, we'll have our, say, half the field will come due, and then we'll try to plant it again, which we'll see if it's successful. But we're gonna try this year, we are going to make it so we have a staggered harvest. So we did lose a tremendous amount of plants last year, it wasn't fun. Because we just, we got overwhelmed, I think, at the end. Some of the people running my place, unfortunately, maybe didn't know what they were doing. So we fixed that for this year. So, I think just from a standpoint of how much we have flowering at once, it won't be the entire field. So that's this year, and then what we're moving into, I think, is, right now, we're licensed for forty to fifty thousand square feet of canopy. So I think in year, if this coming up is our next year, the year afterwards, I think our canopy in town might be down to forty thousand. And that's, I think, gonna be a function of us moving to greenhouse type. Like, right now, we have one greenhouse, we're putting another greenhouse in. I'm coming back shortly for a couple more greenhouses. And then I think what we'll do is eventually litter the site with greenhouses. And the greenhouses are the roll-up type. So I think from a standpoint of, you know, corralling the smell and then putting it out in one concentrated, like, hit, will change as well. That's kind of my, we'll see how this goes this year, and then you'll see us transform into growing in our greenhouses. We'll be in a town next door growing as well, so... That's kind of my overview, that's what I got for you.
So, I'd like to see if there's any questions from the boards for research management.
So which varieties will you be growing?
So, we're gonna grow some called autos. So similar to what we were growing last year. So they're automatics. So you plant it, and they just come due, doesn't matter about the sun. So some of them are sixty day, some are sixty-five, some are seventy, seventy-five day. So we can stagger our harvest that way by using different type seeds. So we'll grow some of those, and then we grow some earlys, that are basically normal type seeds that come due earlier in the year, rather than trying to stretch into, like, late September, September, October. There's the mold, so you wanna avoid the mold if you can.
When do you expect the earlys to be ready? To be, for harvest?
I hope in July.
July.
Here's to hoping.
Further questions and comments from the boards?
Couple of quick questions. Damon, you mentioned, and I'm very confused here, because you said that you're staggering the planting, but yet you're also using different varietals. So, what is it, I mean, how are you going to be staggering? Are you gonna stagger using the varietals, or are you gonna stagger using the...
Well, we're gonna start staggering with Tom.
If I may finish this quickly. Or are you gonna be staggering by delaying the planting, not the planting, the seeding by weeks?
Yeah, we're gonna be, like, delaying the plantings. So we'll plant, you know, hopefully, say, five thousand plants, and then a couple of weeks later, we'll plant some more. So what we're trying to do is not run until last year where they're all harvesting at around the same time.
I guess the question I'm bringing up, though, is that if you are also then using different varietals that have different maturity, right? Will that not also influence how you have to plant these things? So just to make sure that you do not get things all blooming at the same time?
That's a good question. So I was just giving an example of automatics, that you can buy these type of different seeds.
Yeah.
So we're gonna try to use sixty-five day seeds, and try to do it as quickly as possible.
Okay.
So, but I understand what you're saying, but yeah, we're not gonna mess up our timing by using different seed plants, I guess.
Right, so one of the things that I think is very important for us, the board here, at least from a planning board perspective, not speaking for the Board of Health, but for the planning board, is we are gonna have a subsequent meeting where we want to see the concrete implementation plans that you're bringing from your perspective. I'd like to understand and see a very concrete plan of when you plan to do your planning, what kind of plants you're going to be doing, or you're gonna be putting in, and from a time period perspective, so that we can get a sense that this is actually being done, not like this here, but, you know, in an educated manner. So I would really ask you to consider this here very carefully, from a seeding, on how you're planting this here, and how you plan on utilizing that as a means by which you're going to hopefully mitigate the problem that has been presented by some of the citizens from here, okay? I mean, I think it's an interesting plan, but we just want to get some more concrete understanding from your perspective.
And that's also what the Board of Health would like.
Yeah.
I've been here, Kathy?
She said that's... Further, further questions and comments from the boards?
Are there any other mitigation mechanisms that you can put in place for the smell other than what you have just stated here?
I mean, I could try what Bowie did across the street last year in line in the streets with, you know, those wildflowers. I mean, I don't really know of any way, I mean, it's a big, open field.
Well, wildflowers definitely do help a little bit. It's a very, very small amount, but anything helps. Have you at all considered oxidizing agents at all?
I mean, I've heard of them when you're using them inside of buildings.
They're actually also used nowadays by outside growers, and it's actually very popular in California as well, in Colorado and other places.
The lines that go around properties, or...
I'm not gonna tell you how to do it, but I think you should probably maybe take a look at that and see whether or not there is something that you could do when it comes to this year. Because it is touted to be as an effective means by which, by which at least some people indicate that odor controls can be managed. And so I would urge you to take a look at that, potentially do a cost benefit of analysis on your end, and a cost to you, as well as obviously a cost to the consumer here, which is basically us, the, or not the consumer, but to your neighbors, okay? So I'm presenting this here to you as an alternative, and I'm not a, I'm not an expert in the field that you are an expert in, but I certainly have educated myself in this particular area, and I think you ought to take a look at this here, because it is actually being used by major growers out in the West.
Yeah, I mean, I'm definitely looking for anything, you know, as long as it doesn't spray anything over our plants, like, that would be my...
I don't believe that that's the case, but please take a look at that, okay?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
And echoing Francois's point, I think a lot of what you're talking about makes sense because we're in kind of new ground here. There's, there aren't a lot of outdoor grows in Massachusetts, and in Colorado, and California. They choose, they chose to go about them differently than you here. So we're kind of working with the situation that we're in, and we're all figuring out. But it sounds like some of what you're proposing makes sense, because ultimately, when you're talking about outdoors, dilution is a key factor. So if you have less plants, there's more of an opportunity for dilution. To Francois's point about alternative mitigation measures, I think it would be helpful for us, and helpful to the public, if when you were just putting in, putting something in writing, if you could also just comment on why some things aren't appropriate for you. Because I know from like your standpoint, and from our standpoint, from working with you so much, that folks in the public might be like, well, everybody uses carbon filtration for this. Well, yeah, but that's because they're doing indoor grows. And just walking down the line saying, okay, well, an oxidizer or ozone is appropriate or isn't appropriate because of this, and just say, because of the situation wherein. What we can do for mitigation is crop planting, trying to put ourselves in a place where there's an opportunity for more dilution. And look at it that way, because to also echo Francois's point, like, I did a bunch of research into kind of getting ready for this meeting. And, like, one of the conceptions that I've heard introduced a lot is that there's no objective way to measure smell. Well, that's not how Colorado looks at it. They have what they believe is an objective measure based upon this thing that looks like a nasal telescope, where they're letting in so much filtered air versus air that's there, a detectable threshold. And that's actually codified into their state statutory framework. So, there are potentially some ways to look at that, and some inspiration when you kind of get through some of those places. So just kind of step in us and the public through what you think can and can't practically apply to you. I think it would be pretty helpful for everybody. Further question or comment from the board?
I have a question, as a farmer also, with your roll-up greenhouses. What kind of fans did the Cannabis Commission ask you to put in? Because I haven't seen your greenhouse.
None.
None?
Yeah. They don't like ask us to, they don't...
In order for you to have a mold-free type crop come in, or anything like that?
No, they don't get into anything like that.
They don't get into that?
Since our product's tested, you know, at the end. But yeah, they don't...
Are you drying it there as well?
No, we flash freeze it.
You flash freeze it, okay.
We eventually would like to dry it, but indoors. So, we're gonna try possibly dry some stuff this year in the trailer, and see how it goes.
And the stuff dry in the trailer, obviously, be subject to carbon filtering, because that is a controlled environment.
Yeah, we could put something in there.
Yeah, that's under OSHA's standards, you have to have careful ventilation, because it was a case of a marijuana place in, where a fella died because he got asthmatic type reactions to it. I'm sure you all heard of that, but, so yeah, any drying that's done inside a facility has to have very careful exposure to the workers.
Yeah.
Is it possible for me to respond to that comment? No?
Uh, we have work...
When was our turn? It's just about that particular case, and, okay.
Yep, just...
That's fine. Just to clarify.
Yep, throw it on hold for us.
Okay.
Alright, were there any comments that were coming in? I guess we should have double-checked for online. Um, how are we doing for time?
Almost a minute, probably.
If it is a very specific question for this permit holder, I'll take it now, but otherwise, I'd like to hold off on additional public comment.
I'll just say that from the moment you pick it, and it starts drying, the smell almost disappears immediately, or very close. Because what's giving off the fume is what dries. The flower closes right up.
Any, anybody else with something very specific and narrow to this applicant?
Yeah, I would like to know, either a member of this board, member of the Board of Health, or a member of the Town Administration Office, who would be able to determine whether the... the changes that they make are sufficient for what they are trying to do, which is keep the odor from spreading throughout the residential area. In other words, he's gonna do the type of air quality service. Who's gonna know that the air quality machines that he brings in are big enough to cover the acreage he's got or the size he's got? Which member of the board or the Town Administration will be able to go on site and say, okay, yeah, this is what we need for this size of facility? It's kind of like getting a septic system to a house. You gotta have a septic system for so many square feet or so many bedrooms in a house. Well, he's got so many square feet of planting area, who would know that the air quality machines that he installs are enough to cover the acreage he's got on this, on either one of these two boards?
So just to take that as a question as the chair, so we're gonna look at what these mitigation plans are and evaluate them, make them available to the public, and the Planning Board does have the right to hire discipline-specific experts to provide us information when we need, so if we feel we need it.
Thank you.
I believe the, I don't know what the statutory authority is for the Board of Health on that, but.
Same thing.
Yeah.
It's the same for the Board of Health.
All right, so if there's no further direct questions related to that property, I'd like to move on to fifty-six Gardner Road, which is Paper Crane.
That's me. I'm gonna start. Hello, everybody. I'm Bowie. Hello, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for taking the time tonight to come to this. Everyone's busy. I understand that I'm gonna stand up here just so everyone can see me. I'd also like to thank all these guys for creating such an amazing site, taking that old dilapidated property, which was fifty-six Gardner Road and is now one of the premier organic regenerative cannabis farms in the state, I might add. I'm actually flying to Prague to speak about regenerative, regenerative and organic cannabis farming to a global commission of cannabis reform agents for emerging markets. So, you know, we're just here in this little town, people have noticed this farm, what we're doing, we're one of the only fully organic regenerative farms, and we really actually owe it to a lot of these contractors over here who showed up on time, kicked ass, didn't overcharge me, excuse my language, and got things done on a timeline that actually shocked my state inspectors when they showed up to inspect my farm the first time, they said this was one of the fastest cannabis farms that has ever been developed on their watch. So I'd like to just thank these guys right after that. But I wanna jump back to Francois Stager's comment. He's have a printout here. I just wanna say Google searching anything regarding cannabis is also very similar to Google searching the lump that you find in your neck. You are going to be dead from that lump by the morning if you read, if you believe everything you read, so everything should be taken with a grain of salt. This study right here is from 2022, it speaks in depth about the dry mist ozone and botanical oil misting system that you're referencing. It's used by wastewater treatment plants, it's also used by dumps and landfills. It was, just, I'm gonna leave this, you guys can read it, pass it around, it's very interesting. It addresses this specifically, that system that you're describing is primarily used in light deprivation, closed environmental greenhouses that have a roof vent, and those misting systems are stretched along the roof vent, sorry, are stretched along the roof vent and mist when the roof vent opens. In this study that you're gonna read here, there were four hundred complaints, the system was installed, and it dropped to a hundred and ninety complaints. So it's, I think it's a, people wanna believe that there's a silver bullet, there is not. This property that we bought, and that Damon bought, these properties were the zoning that the town of Hubbardston created for cannabis, and it was specifically targeted towards outdoor marijuana cultivation. That is why we're where we are, that's why we're doing what we're doing. That's the, that is the most important thing to understand here, is we did not choose those properties, we had to choose them, 'cause that's all that was available, and that was the zoning that you all chose. So that's just, if there was, now I understand where, as I said in the Planning Board meetings and we were doing the special permit, this, I consider this an experiment, that I said that many times during the, during the Planning Board meetings for the special permit. So I realize we're working through this, I just wanna leave that, so this addresses exactly the mitigation system you're talking about. We will not be, I've investigated it, I've spoken to one of the companies about it, we're not gonna even entertain it for two reasons. Number one, Massachusetts has the lowest microbial testing thresholds for cannabis in the state. That means when we take our weed and we dry it, we send it to the lab, the microbial limits, the colony-forming units are the, have the lowest threshold for cannabis in the country, here in Massachusetts. What that system does is it emits a mist of botanical oils, thyme, oregano, rosemary, and ozone. We are not spraying anything on our cannabis, we can't spray, even the allowed products that we're allowed to spray, which are the non-EPA-registered oil-based products, we do not even take them out of the building past week four. So that holds the misting mitigation system from Santa Barbara, and I know there's a couple of big grows in San Diego County also that were in really tight urban areas, I know exactly the ones you're talking about. It would be actually impossible for us to sell the weed we grow if we are gonna be misting it twenty-four seven with botanical rosemary oil. So I just wanna throw that out there, that is, everybody can do the research, but there's a, there's, we'll submit that, it's just an article from a website, Environmental Health Perspective, or yeah, Perspectives. Take what you will. Now, I just wanna backtrack a little bit to talk about the zoning of the farm. This is very, very important. I want everybody to know that our farm is where it is, because I know Tom left, I'm sure he didn't like the tone of the room. When Tom and I first met, he was very standoffish, and I think once he got to know me a little bit, we became friends. Next thing you know, I'm on the gator, driving through the trails in the woods with Tom, and he's all relaxed, and he explained to me that he had designed that zoning so he could grow weed in the field next to the antique store. Okay? This is, this is what, this is a conversation I had with him. Now, I know that's APR land, I know it's probably, since it has a federal title on it, it's probably too difficult, but that is the zoning that he designed and put in place, which is why we are where we are. There were plenty of rural residential areas where the marijuana could have been, could have been zoned in Hubbardston. It was zoned right on Route sixty-eight, right amongst all the parcels that Tom owns. And what he said to me on that gator ride was, well, you know what you guys have done, he was so impressed with my lot, and I invite everybody to come to the farm and come look at what an amazing sight it is now. He was so impressed, he said, you know what, if you guys do all over there, maybe we'll take the fence down and you can grow over here. That's a fact, okay? I just want everybody to know that here. So I'm sure Tom and I are gonna have a lot of fun over the years to come, but I just like, that happened, that was a, that was a situation, and, you know, I extended the hand to him. This is the zoning he created, these are the sites that now we own and we're operating under, and it's just, it's a little frustrating that, that this is the position we're in now, considering that I was told by the person who actually oversaw the zoning that he wanted to grow weed there as well. So I just wanted to get that off my chest. Now, where were we? What else am I talking about? What a different question.
What are your plans, Bowie, to?
Oh, yeah, I'll jump right, I'll jump right to Katie's, I'll jump right to what Katie was talking about. I brought a rough site plan here, and let me just, I'm not gonna sit, I'm not gonna hold it up.
Somebody hold that, you will put it, it'll be up on the screen.
Great.
This way for the camera.
All right, what, what, what Katie was talking about, when Whitney and Katie came to the site, Katie was very candid, and she said, I sat here while my daughter mowed the lawn, and it smelled, there's no way around it. I understand it smelled, here's why it smelled. Damon and I were going off of breeder recommendations, so these large breeding nurseries that create these seeds in these strains, this is a big new emerging industry now, so we were basically going on their planting recommendation of plant density for our sites. They both sent agents to the farm, they looked at our layouts, they looked at our square footage, our airflow, our sun exposure, everything else, they said, here's how you can maximize with these different things that we have. None of these are skunk varieties. We have, we set in the special permit, we were not growing skunk, nobody grows skunk in Massachusetts, because skunk flowers until November. It's a, it's a, it's a land-raised sativa. It's a type of marijuana that we can't grow, so we can take the skunk right off the table as we did in the Planning Board meetings. Now, the reason we plant the way we plant is just like any other farm operation, you have to diversify what you're planting to mitigate the risk in case of loss. So in cannabis, you plant stuff that flowers very early, you stuff, plant stuff that flowers in the middle of the season, and you plant stuff that flowers at the end of the season. When I say the end of the season, I'm talking September fifteenth, October first is an absolute outlier for plants that can make it that far, nothing of quality that can be sold in a store can really be grown, can be pushed into October, so we're really talking about the automatics, which have a hard planting date of around June one and can be, begin to be harvested around August one. There's another, some of them go a little bit later, that pushes another couple of weeks out, and then you have your early fall finishing plants. We have to do this because you can't put all your eggs in one basket, you can't grow one strain, this is, first of all, you have to, we're trying to appease the market here, which is exploding, so you have to diversify your strains, you have to diversify your cultivars, you have to diversify your timeline. So that's exactly what we did. Now, I know we talked in the Planning Board meetings about, like, you know, Damon and I are both experienced farmers, nobody is as experienced on the scale of two acres. I didn't claim to be, I've worked on some big farms in California. Like I said in the Planning Board meeting, this is an experiment, we, so what did we do? We called them the professionals from the top breeding nurseries in the country, we took their recommendations and we plugged them into the site plan. So what that did, I did the, basically the same thing Damon did, we waited a little bit too late, and we ended up planting plants too dense all at once, too many plants, too close together, too many to harvest at a time that a small crew can handle. Again, we didn't know that, 'cause it's our first year of operations, we're implementing these operating procedures for the first time, and even though we're not allowed any agricultural exceptions, or to even say that this is an agricultural practice, I think everybody knows, it is, okay? So what's, even though we are not allowed to claim any agricultural. So this zone over here, and I want everybody to know, my layout has changed in case anyone, this zone right here, on the junkyard, on John's Auto side, was our primary auto flower zone. I planted almost fifteen thousand plants over there, in groups of five thousand plants at a time, roughly, and these are round numbers. Again, I'm happy to show anybody what we're doing, but, you know, we were basically planting about five thousand of these auto flowers at a time. Now, this is, like I said, going on strict breeder recommendations. What happened? Well, we watched what happened, the same thing happened for us, it happened to Damon, we got behind in harvesting. So a lot of those sixty and sixty-five day plants in full sun on field scale are ready at fifty-five days. You can't just flip a coin and activate an entire harvest, so, you know, on the drop of a hat. We were learning as we were going. We learned that, we learned many things. Number one, this planting was too dense, there was too many plants for my small eight-man crew to handle, all at once, we couldn't get them in the building fast enough. It was, we were a little overwhelmed, we became overwhelmed at the beginning of harvest, and we continued to be overwhelmed until the middle of September. We are not heavily bankrolled, I'm not funded by venture capital, we were, we are, most of my, my core crew is here, we did the absolute best we could, and I ended up throwing probably close to about a thousand pounds of weed on my compost pile after it went through the chipper. I do not wanna do that, it's not what I wanna do, and that also weed that was sitting in the field too long, stinking. I'm sorry for that.
I know, I think you legitimately wanna work with us.
So we, just that being said, we have some, I don't wanna create the illusion that we're gonna implement operating procedures that are going to mitigate the smell of marijuana, I'm gonna go right back to the zoning. This, you guys could have stuck these farms anywhere in town, you stuck them across from the pizza place. So that's just now we're doing, I cannot figure out, you know, there's obviously other zoning we could have used. So, sorry. Now, that being said, we are planning this year a completely different crop rotation. So we're reducing our number of auto flower plants, and this is not a hard number, I don't wanna be held to this, this is farming, just like if you propagate, you know, if you're gonna propagate tomatoes for a hoop house, my family's in agriculture in South Florida, and I grew up growing organic avocados and mangoes and tomatoes. So you always have to propagate more plants than you're going to use. You have plant selection, a lot of plants are gonna die, you could get a hard freeze. We are going for roughly one-third less plants in this area, we're spacing them out further, we're staggering exactly as Damon described, the planting times and the flowering times, and we're basically trying to zero it down to a formula where with my small eight-to-ten man maximum harvest crew, we can harvest one full row of mature plants, or two, in one afternoon, get them out of the field on the rack, into my building, which has smell mitigation, has carbon mitigation. That is my primary plan, that's the only thing that will really work. The offensive, the heavy smell that, you know, during the hot days that Katie was describing was from exactly that, we had too many plants in the field, we were behind on harvest, and that's, that's, that, there's, that's it. That's, that's exactly what happened, and all of a sudden, five days takes by, I would like those plants to be in the building too. Something else to notice, when you, when you hit a snag in a, on a cannabis operation, I can't go down to Home Depot and hire people and throw them in my car and bring them back, it's a one-month onboarding process to batch them, so they can get one of these, so they can step onto that site and touch a plant. So that is also about a four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar process for each, just administratively for each person to be registered. So I just, even if I had wanted to say, hey, we're getting a little behind here, I'm gonna bring in twenty-five people and let's get all these plants in, that's not the way it works, because of the gross amount of overregulation of this industry, which is another topic. So for our mitigation plan, there is no mitigation plan. We are improving our operating procedures for planting, we're trying to zero in on our harvest times and make sure that we can handle what's in the field. Our buildings are equipped to handle the smell once they come into the building. So last year, we planted a little too densely, things came, you know, we were also learning the timelines of these cultivars, which we are now growing at field scale for the first time. So that's, you know, something else to keep in mind, so, okay, this is, this is a seventy-five day plant, well, there's seventy-five days on the schedule. Okay, there's, this thing is ready now, it's fifty-eight days, well, that's, that's what we're learning, okay? Is this plant, which, and that's just an example, so everything is different, and your microclimate, your frost zone, we gathered a lot of data last year, I apologize for the offensive odor during the hot, heavy days, I get it, I understand, most of that stuff, if I could have gotten it in the building, I would have. I get it, I understand. Most of that stuff, I, if I could have gotten in the building, I would have. There's, uh, that's the main plan is, uh, for us in particularly, we're reducing our, our plant numbers by about a third, roughly, which, which me and my team have calculated is gonna be, you know, a manageable, a manageable thing for us to handle.
Do you think that's gonna lower the, the, the strong odor? You mean, uh, oh?
What's gonna lower the strong odor is when we have 800, 900, 1,000 plants that are ready, we can say, hey, you know what, let's get a jump on these three or four days early and let's get them in, okay? Which is just, we, we were implementing the SOPs for the first time last year. Everybody was a chicken with their head cut off running around. Not to mention that, Eddie touched on, we are heavily regulated. We're dropped in on by state inspectors frequently, and, you know, those are invasive searches, which nobody, I mean, we're talking, you know, the whole farm shuts down when inspectors come. Um, you know, we have inspections, we have all of the state oversight, there's, it was, we were just doing the best we could. We planted a little too densely and we got behind. We're gonna try and do better this year. With about a third less plants, better understanding of the cultivars, and, um, now my crew is, you know, we have a year under our belts, we have a knowledge of the site. We know which parts of the site have more moisture content in the ground, less over here, more here. These come riper a little quicker over here, these are gonna need a little bit longer. They get a little more shade a little bit later in the day. There's no sci, this isn't a perfect science. That's indoor cultivation, and I have news for everybody. That stinks 365 days a year. I'm not sure if anybody has been to Colorado or Los Angeles in the last five years.
Or even other places in Massachusetts.
Or Athol, but those large indoor cultivation facilities with million-dollar HVAC systems stink. 365. How do I know that?
The OEO search building in Vichberg, drive down Route 2.
That's right.
The old Powers, the dump.
That's right.
Which is right across the street in the methane, and they have the biggest fans and everything else, and you can smell it at 70 miles an hour.
All right, well, thank you for your comments. Please, please direct them at the board in reserve for when we ask for them. Just, uh, just keep us moving for time. I'd like to, to move for questions and comments from the boards.
Bowie, quick question. First of all, uh, the comment with regards to the, uh, to the ozone is absolutely great and appreciated, as I mentioned to Damon earlier. I'm no expert in this here, it is certainly something that we expect you to come back with. These are the alternatives, these are the pros, these are the cons. This is why this is a con. You've presented that, and that's exactly what I'm looking for, and that's what we as a board and I think as a citizenry is looking. I appreciate and applaud the fact that you're doing that. First question for you, though, is the following. While the plant is in the field, because this is an open field, right? While the plant is on the field, when does it start smelling?
So, well, the plant smells when it's eight inches tall. A clone, if you, if you, if you pick up a clone, or you pick up a, a stock cutting, that's the stalk and the leaf, there is smell there.
When does it start stinking to the point where your neighbors are gonna start complaining?
About, between, around two to three weeks before harvest date is when the intensity begins, and that's when, you know, that's when it becomes intense.
Okay.
Yep.
From the time that that happens to the time that it's harvestable, is that a parameter that you have a control over? What I'm saying here is, is can you pick that plant as close as possible to when it starts to really stink? Or is that, you need to just let it mature for that two weeks?
No, no, no. So, we're outdoor farmers. So, we, our, our primary goal is to make sure the weed gets in the building. So, usually when we're in the ballpark, we are, there, there, there's a game that you play when you grow indoor and that's, you try and, you try and push it.
Keep it to, keep it to your outdoor.
Right, no, no, just as an example. So, like, that is, we are always trying to basically average the, uh, the environmental conditions, the quality of the plant, the stage, you know, the color of the trichome, and make a call. Outdoor harvest, outdoor farmers are always looking for it to get them in the building as soon as possible. Everybody remembers Hurricane, what, Isabel in 2012? It came up right through central Mass into southern Vermont. So, like, you know, weed, that's, that's all we're thinking about is, is, is rain and everything else. So, of that two weeks, I'll take it, if it's an auto flower, I'll take it at the very beginning, if I can. And if it's going, depending on where it's going, if it's going for extraction, if it's going for pre-ground flower, you know, there, there are other factors there as well, but in general, our inclination is as soon as possible in the building. I, like I said, I probably threw 1,000 pounds of, of weed on my compound.
So, I hear two things from, several things that you are already putting in place. One is, is certainly you're reducing the overall number of plants, which hopefully gives you better control. That is the mitigation factor, by the way. The second is, is that you are actually taking a look at, at, at putting that parameter and gauging it better so that you can bring it in and hopefully by so doing, reduce the quote-unquote perceived stench that some people, uh, see coming from, from your field. So, if I hear you correctly, once the flower is ready for you to harvest, in whatever shape, form it is, you have a certain amount of control to minimize the amount of time that it is exposing itself by, 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 uh, uh, the odors are exposing themselves to, to, to your neighbors. And that's the second way that you're actually trying to do so, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the third one I hear is, is that you're not gonna leave stuff on the field, which is going to, when I say that, it's the rotting stuff, which makes it even worse. So, I, I, I hear that you've already put three concrete examples of ways in which you're trying to mitigate 2023 harvest to reduce the overall stench. Is that a fair statement on my side?
That's, that's fair, and also, um, I cooled the stove shop, which was not, didn't have any cooling before, where it's now has air conditioning, so we're actually gonna be using that as additional dry and cure space, so we can get more in the buildings quicker. So, that's another 2,000 square, or 1,800 square feet of usable space, even if the big building is full. And so, that is another factor. It just allows us to get more out of the field into the building quicker.
And if the chair permits me, and I know that we're not talking about, uh, the prior, uh, farm, but Damon, this is the type of thing that we're looking for, okay? I mean, you have a partner across the street who's coming up with some very concrete plans, and it's not the, well, I think, or it might, or this type of thing. This is the type of presentation that we're looking for, all right? And I would urge you to shape yourself up to something of this nature. I think it gives a little bit better presentation towards, and, and, and a, and a better way in which we as a citizenry can start gauging a real effort from anybody who wants to really participate with the town to try to mitigate these issues, okay? So, I appreciate what you've done here. Thank you.
Great.
I, just to hop in for, for a quick moment here, because I, I want to make sure we're using the same words, talk about the same things, because it jumped out during your, your discussion when you were using the word mitigating, that you might be using it differently than I think the planning board is using it.
Okay.
So, the planning board isn't using the word mitigate to say eliminating all possible smells that may be coming from the property. That, that's not what we're saying. When we're saying mitigation, we're talking, to Francois's point, we're talking about exactly what you guys just talked about. Reasonable, actionable steps that you can take that will make a difference in what's going on. And you've both talked about a list of them. So, when, when we say we're looking for, for a mitigation plan to be communicated to us, so we can communicate it to the public and folks come to us, we're essentially just looking for you to summarize what you've just gave us so that when we have folks coming to our offices that aren't at this meeting, that, that we can, we can talk about this and present them with that. And that way, as we go forward through this year, we can continue the discussion because I, I personally, not speaking for the entire board, think that there's gonna be some kind of discussion while we figure this out. And, and hopefully it keeps the kind of tone that we're all with right now, where we're trying things, we're figuring it out. You guys sound like you have a pretty thought, both of, uh, both of the permit holders, sound like you have a pretty thoughtful planting plan, which seems like it, it should make a difference. Not having plant, extra plants sit out in the field through the, uh, the ripening phase, that's an actionable step. And, and it sounds like you are proposing things that, that are gonna make a difference. We just need to make sure that we're communicating all of those things because one of the things that we struggle with as a board is there, there's people on all kinds of different sides of the issue, and, and the people who come in the room to, to talk are the most passionate people. And, and we try to balance to where kind of the majority of the people are, which is usually somewhere in between the folks that are in the room, because we're, we're trying to do the best we can for the most people in the town.
Of course.
And I think what, what we're asking for, and frankly, what you guys gave us, you just, I would just like to request you to give it to the planning board in a more organized way. Essentially what you're proposing, I think is gonna get us a long way for continuing that conversation. And, and I'm just speaking for myself on the planning board here, but does anybody else on the planning board have any other thoughts on that?
I have to agree, well, I think you're supposed to try to do the right thing here, get this to work out. And from the very beginning here, everybody was very open about the fact that this is gonna have an odor to it. This is not a surprise to anybody here, and I particularly don't like the smell. And, but if we can do an operation that's gonna change that and make it a lot easier for people, that's great. Because I know when we were growing up as kids living here, every time we went to school on the school bus, we had to close our windows by certain farms because they stunk so much, and we got used to that. And those, we couldn't do anything to change the operation. This sounds, I'm, I'm comfortable with this, and I hope it really works to make it good for everybody. These folks did come in here and spend a lot of money. So, hopefully they can make also, the town of Houston, put some of the money in their pocket. And that was the whole intention with this, um, to make it go forward and work for everybody. So, hopefully it'll work out.
So, we've kind of blended into what was item D on the agenda.
Sorry.
Well, no, no, that's fine. I, I'm the one who started blending it.
Oh, okay.
At least from a planning board perspective on, on what at least the planning board is just looking to get from you guys. Because from a planning board perspective, I don't think anybody in the planning board is talking about any kind of action related to your permit. We're just trying to keep a dialogue going with you.
Sure.
From, from a planning board standpoint, uh, and, and with that, um...
Yeah, I make a comment from Board of Health.
I'm about to say I'd like to turn it over to the Board of Health for item D off of the agenda.
So, um, I think I can speak not just for myself, but for a couple of the other board members, that as a board, when we do get odor complaints, we are required to do something about it. That's the first mandate from the Massachusetts Department of Health. Number two, um, yes, maybe the letter we sent to both properties was pretty intense, but per the guidelines of the Massachusetts Board of Health, if you don't include all the possible stipulations upfront in your letter, then, um, should anything go awry down the road as meetings go forward, um, you can't backtrack. So, we put forth a letter that included all the possible stipu, stipulations that might occur. Not that we were looking for that, we really, bottom line was looking for a plan of how you were gonna address this. And the information that both of you are giving to the town tonight is, um, is what we were looking for in general terms. Like the planning board, we would like to see some of this in writing as, it's not written in gold, but something that you're working towards. We all, we are a farming community and we do understand that the weather and the sunlight and the lack of sunlight, um, affects growing times, and therefore, no matter what variety you grow, whether it's an automatic 65-day plant or it's some other, the weather is gonna determine whether it comes in at 58 or 75. Whether it's a cold summer or it's a hot and dry summer like last year, so everything came fast.
Sure, or latitude, or like I said, we're, we're just learning.
And altitude. Hubbardson has some altitude compared to other parts. So, um, we look forward to seeing what you put forward to the two groups. And, um, thank you for your time tonight because...
I would just like to say also, you came to Kathy, I would like to say, I was extremely put off by your letter and I would like to, to express to the board why. When I, when I purchased 56 Gardener Road, Kathy came to oversee our, my, my perk test for the, um, for the variants, which has been approved for my retail store there. Immediately after we met, the first thing that you said to me, sorry to point, was that you voted against the cannabis ordinance.
No, I did not.
Oh, yes it is. Oh, yes it is.
I'm sorry, I have not voted against it, I voted for it.
You told me, standing next to that pit, that you voted against it.
Madam, madam chair, and, uh...
And here, and two and a half years later, I get a threat of a $365,000 fine for a subjective...
I didn't put, we did not put a dollar, ma'am.
A thousand dollars a day, a 365 days a year, which is, someone could argue my farm smells every day, is, that's, that's a $365,000 fine. So, that's just, that's how I took it. I took it as, and I'm, if that's not what you remember, that was my takeaway from our very first meeting. So, I went from that, which I would also like to say that perk failed and then my next perk passed with flying colors. I'm not, I'm just saying, it did.
I didn't run the test, sir, I was just a witness.
I know, but I'm saying, I'm telling the board and everyone here, what you told me on that, at our very first time we met, and then I get a letter from you signed with a, a threat to my business. So, I just, that, that is, that's part of this conversation. I feel like it's important that people know.
I'm sorry you didn't remember, frankly, because that's not what I said.
Can I, before we go any further, I left the meeting and this man said that I said some things I deserve to be heard, Mr. Chair, about what he said about me. He's telling me that he was, I watched it, he said that I told him that I wanted to grow marijuana on my property. My property, which is the big field right across from Pizza Palace, is APR property, agricultural preservation property. That property cannot have cannabis or anything else like that grown on it, or camp, grown on it. It's against the law. The federal, the money that is used to purchase that from me, for, I mean, for the agricultural restriction, was purchased with federal dollars, and federal dollars do not allow, and you call the State Agriculture Department, they tell you you cannot grow marijuana. To have this man sit there, or stand here and lie, absolutely lie that I would say that...
Pouring water.
Well, he's lying, this, I want an apology.
We have an, we have a meeting open, we need to pour your water here.
So, I, I really don't want to entertain a discussion about who said what and so on and that.
It's a, it's a, it's a federal law.
We, we have, we...
You know, you asked Kathy, now you accuse Kathy of lying?
We, we...
You people are crazy if you believe a word out of this man's mouth.
Tom, I just saw you come in here and push him out of the way.
So, what, five-minute recess, five-minute recess. We're, we're, I'm, I'm declaring a five-minute recess, if everybody can calm down, then we can regate over at the meeting, so.
And Damon wanted to...
I'm sorry, we're, we're not recognizing any of this discussion.